Okay, certainly. Thanks for attending the work session for January 2019. Let's skip rather than our agenda a little bit and we'll start with Central Office. This is Beezak. Any elementary federal funds for Mrs. Beezak or any questions for Mrs. Beezak?
I just want to tell the board that we did get our United Way grant. We got our first installment of it and again to remind you that this United Way grant of $4,000 will be used to, to for the first time in June, a three-day winter camp where we're going to try to focus on two primary schools and solicit students from those two buildings in particular at first. And then if any spots are made open, then we would of course open up for remaining individuals. This is our first time doing this in a long time and if we have, if we find that it is something that we want to explore in the future, then what we would do is obviously write for grants to do at the end of college summer. But I do want to say that the United Way did send, because she's found the letters saying that we did get the first installment and that money is going to work on the school for kids.
Any questions for the board from Mrs. Beezak? Okay, thank you. Mr. Hutchinson, high school principal as well as secondary supervisor. Mr. Hutchinson?
Just to keep the board informed, we trained the teachers for six through 12 for that Safe to Say state mandate, which is the anonymous tip line that the state came out with. It is actually live today. Our next step will be to train all six through 12 students, whether it be an interactive video, which myself and Mr. Bowden are looking at, or a PowerPoint. We also received word that we did receive the $25,000 for the PCCD grant. So it should be, it's there. However, however, we spend it, we will be reimbursed. We did select a bag scanner. So I'm telling the board, we're discussing with the board that whatever options you want to go, I know we discussed North and South, but there is $25,000 for that PCCD grant.
Do we have a bag scanner now for the students?
No, we do not, not at this time. Did it come in? No.
Off of the student parking lot?
No, we don't at this time.
That was part of what we would like to purchase for North-South and the student entrance and the student line. That $25,000 would go for the purchase of those three packages. So as Mr. Hutchinson said, they did send us an email today releasing the funds and once we spend, then we reimburse the district. I'd like to add, you know, thank Mr. Hutchinson for going to North-South and High School to work with the teachers and faculty on the Safe to Say Something training. And we did not train our students yet. The state asked if we don't train them until it went live, which started today at 14. So now that it's live, we can start training our students. So we will have a plan to get to the middle schools to train the students, grade six through 12, on the Safe to Say Something initiative slash mandate. Any questions for Mr. Hutchinson?
I have one. Jason, what's the deal with Allison Price and all the stuff that goes on in the bathrooms? This woman's upset all the time over racial stories and things like that.
Yeah, I don't know how much of that, you know, we have had some students in the bathrooms. We had some probably males and females in the restroom with the vaping end of it, which has curtailed to that by putting teachers on the outside of the duty. So that has, that has helped with that end of it. I know that's where the frustration began because of the number of individuals being out. As myself and Mr. Peg have spoken, prior to, before this year, we had the agendas. The agendas curtailed a lot of this because you could tell where that kid was. If that kid was out first period, second period, third period, it was marking that agenda for the week. We cut the agendas and we went with room hall passes. However, we're having a hard time keeping track of, if Jason Hutchinson goes out first period, the teacher doesn't know that because they come in and just give the pass back. The first grade teacher goes to second period and I could be out again. But I do think it has gotten better. I think that frustration probably started there. But we've looked at some concerns which we addressed and since then, it has gotten much better, especially on the female end.
The reason why I ask, it was brought to my attention, so that's why I wanted to ask. All right, okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Mr. Hutchinson?
I have a question for Mr. Hutchinson and Mrs. Beezak in their capacities and script. What do you all think about our student delegates proposal? They'll just enclose it on one of them.
I spoke to the student before he presented it. I thought, you know, he was under the assumption that he was going to come in and let you all see. I talked to him and said, why don't he propose his thoughts of where he wants to see it, get some other thoughts from some other districts and propose it to you all. That's in that package, that's what I told him, or kind of scared him to do for you all to review. If you would like to make changes or tweaks, then that's up to you.
Who do you have in mind for a student council advisor?
I do want to say that the student also then reported up to the office to turn in to the secretary to be included. Roger, I did proof it, I gave Mr. Peg a revised one with some suggestions. They are highlighted in yellow. I can let Mr. Peg, either an executive or whenever, at the appropriate time to consider some of the changes that I was unable to. He gave it to me once, I gave him revisions, he brought it back, put it in the format that I suggested and then I also still highlighted because I didn't have an opportunity to meet with him a second time. And so there's about three highlighted areas that I think were probably worth discussion on your part to consider as board members of the extent to which you would consider the participation.
Is this the first draft or the revision?
Well, that draft there is the first draft. As you can see, Mr. Peg has the exact same one, except since that was submitted, there's three areas highlighted that Mr. Peg will share with you that, like I said, might be worthy of some discussion.
Mrs. Beezak, Mr. Hutchinson, I can be with the student to review the highlighted areas and changes and have this updated for you all for Wednesday night. But we did have some discussion, made some, put some things down, which you have the first draft. What you don't have is what Mrs. Beezak had highlighted, the things that we've talked to the student about in regards to kind of finalizing the draft. Okay, so we can have that finalized for you for Wednesday to review.
Well, I do see in terms of Mrs. Beezak, they will be, it would be voted on this coming May. It will be a junior and then they will begin sitting on the board meetings in June. Is that my understanding?
Ironically, that is an area that is worth discussing, that we would like to discuss with the students. Technically, those candidates that are going to be considered are something that still needs some discussion with Mr. Peg and myself and Mr. Hutchinson, I think. And also, since he had submitted that first draft and it was included in your packets, we were able to obtain, for as regular as this is, I guess as an occurrence, not many have an actual policy. I was able to secure one policy since then after speaking to the student. So it was an act of the fact that, so that's one area, Mrs. Wayne, that actually we do want to discuss with them.
Well, I personally feel better knowing that this will have to begin till June, that there will be more discussion because I felt at the December meeting, there were so many things being brought up that we could not, we should not have made a decision on that particular night without more discussion. So I feel much better as a board member that we are going to discuss it.
And after speaking with the individual, I thought, I think we all felt we were putting the cart before the horse. There's not a lot of things out there to fine, however, some are doing it, but without the policy and things like that. So I think it's a good initiative to start. However, if we take our time to do it right, we'll be done for, if that's the route you all decide to go, then we at least have some ground rules or some things in place.
Yes, I feel much better with that way. I felt at the last meeting that it was just kind of a fun attitude. I didn't think it's a good thing too, but I just felt it, I, it was rushed into and I didn't want to make a rational decision as I thought we might be doing. So I feel better with having a discussion about it. I don't know what anyone else feels, but that's all.
I agree with you. Any other questions for Mr. Hutchinson? Thank you, Mr. Hutchinson. Special education, Mrs. Britmich?
We're working on getting ready for extended school year determination of which students are eligible and so on. Mrs. Dunn and I have called the special education teachers across the district to once again talk about the eligibility for that program and how to write the goals of the IEPs for that program. We also are working on some training for the teachers in the month of 30th. Our special education teachers that are secondary are going to have a full day training. This wouldn't be concerning in the state of thirteen, but that's our review, it's our review process this year. So the elementary special education teacher will have that, they'll have a half day for our secondary full day. And we're working on, you know, updating our paperwork. There are new forms that are out, as of the middle of the year, last year, we're trying to make sure that everybody's using the current forms. And we have two teachers that are actually going out of maternity leave, one in January, one in February. So we'll be, you know, concerned about how great all those students. I don't know about it right now, if there's questions?
I have a question. Now that there's a third person at Plava, is that working better?
Absolutely. With Mr. Zellig?
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely. It's definitely helped with the case loads for kindergarten through third and then the fourth through grade teachers.
Now, will this be like a continuation? How many of these students will go like to middle school next year?
I know that's something that Mrs. Dunn and I have discussed. I'm not sure what they're going to do as far as the plan next year. But another concern is we're still receiving special education, they're pending right now. So we still don't know if some of these students are going to receive our qualified special ed services too. I'm not exactly sure what they might have for next year.
I was speaking to Mrs. Dunn on that topic and she feels after this year, that the additional position at Plava may not be needed because a lot of those students will be transitioning into the middle school. But we can look at those numbers, as Dr. Witt had mentioned, that a lot of the, there are a lot of students being tested or on the list to be tested, but we don't know what the counts would be for next year as of yet.
And you know, the other people coming in, like new students.
Right.
Well, since we're talking about the number of students, if everyone is going to be recognized at the end of the special report, according to the updated numbers, North has a total, special means eighty-one, South has a total of a hundred and four. Mrs. Britmich, can you tell me if there's still a half a day, only a half a day position there at South?
Yes, there is. I mean, you have two teachers actually that spend half days. One of them is our life skills teacher. She spends her second half of her day at Smithfield. And then we have another teacher who's a learning support teacher who spends the second half of her day at North.
So see, this is, it just says on at the morning. I mean, you have this many students at South and you have two half a day teachers. Is Mr. Frisco here? Can you tell me how near North?
Mr. Frisco is absent. When I get his doctor's appointment, he will be here, he will be here once a night.
Mrs. Britmich, do you know the South thing there?
I'm sorry.
By the chance?
I'm sorry now.
I mean, because, you know, I have been crying for help for South for probably two years, okay? And I'm not voting one, so I'm against the next, if we needed a Plava. But I, I have been concerned with South for two years. And here are the numbers and I just can't, I won't be voting yes for the two that at Plava, knowing that South is in the condition.
Well, I can assure you that I think a lot of us stand for that as well. We've been really, we use extra, extra long with South. And, you know, I can't speak to the numbers that are leading South next year, going to the high school, or how that's going to change. I know that there are a number of life skills students that will be moving out. But in terms of learning support, it just seems like we're getting more and more of them. So if any help that you can give us, appreciate it.
Okay, it needs to be looked at now. Before the end of the year. It needs to be looked at now.
I do think, I did have a conversation with Mrs. Dunn after our last meeting in December, that that was the plan, was to try to work that out and put a different hope in South. So she does have a technical plan for the start of next year with making that one of those half-day teachers a full day.
I really, I really, it's, in my opinion, I don't want to make that next year. I think it needs now, something needs to be done.
How many are at South, how many learning support teachers?
We have three learning support teachers and we have one and a half life skills teachers. But one of the learning support teachers is a half day.
Maybe I can, maybe I can get together with South. And you're all right.
Something as simple as maybe one of those positions, a full day position at South would be big help.
I've been saying that since the beginning.
Hey, thank you, Mrs. Britmich. Any other questions for Mrs. Britmich?
Question about our discussion, can we make this employment movable at your discretion? As, you know, by decision of the parent. So if there's a need somewhere else, we can move it.
The half and half, the teachers have a north and a half a south?
For the full-time position or the new position?
Yeah, the wife's position is because of the case loads, the teachers would be over their case loads, which would be required by the state to have someone do because they would be over the case load. I don't believe anybody in North or South is over a case load. That's why the position at Plava was so needed because of the number of students on each teacher's case load that they would be over. And that's the need. North or South, they're not over case loads, but certainly we should get to giving more help at South because the numbers are higher at South.
So we took two new teachers at South.
Yes. Thanks for that.
Oh, I understand, I understand.
Technology, Mr. Bowden?
Good evening, everyone. I just want to highlight a few things in regards to the copy machines and the transition from Xerox to Ford. That is officially complete. All of their equipment is now in place. We are starting, we're starting the process of removing the Xerox machines from the buildings. We're working on getting the rest of that scheduled. So far, so good, smooth transition, no complaints. They've been very accommodating with helping getting us online. In regards to security cameras, I have one here requesting additional cameras for the high school. I did a walkthrough with some of the principals and everyone's in the agreeance that we feel that there is a need of additional cameras throughout that building. There's been a few issues that have came up lately with students. So, you know, there was a lack of cameras in areas that students were taking advantage of this. So we'd like to eliminate a lot of the blind spots. So what we're looking at is an additional 25 cameras to what they have. The cost on that is not to exceed $8,000. Mr. Hutchinson, is there anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, I can elaborate. The stairwells, we don't have cameras in them. We do need to put a minimum of two cameras in stairwells in some other areas. So there's, you know, definitely a need for the high school to have those additional cameras.
Mr. Peg, are these, are these cameras, are they viewed in real time or is this something that we have to probably go back and?
Thank you, Mr. Bowden. Yeah, the cameras, when you go back to review them, if there was an issue with the cameras, Chris, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but they are motion sensor. So when there's motion, the cameras will activate for that area. So if there's something to be looked at, if there was an incident, go to that camera, it does pick up. You know, they, they are not continually running at all times. They are motion activated.
We do have a few that are set to run longer than others, but we don't have them all set to report all the time, simply because that would just eat up a ton of storage space. But because of the increasing cameras over the years, this summer I will be adding additional storage space. But to go off of your question, I know during the day, at least I'm speaking for the high school, security monitors those cameras all day, every day. And when issues do come about, like if there's a fight or whatnot, you know, the security and the principals will go back and review that footage. We make case for Chief or Dean if he needs to take to Florida or whatnot.
Chris, the new cameras that were purchased from North and South, those, the installation process is underway at both schools?
Yes, we have, we're preparing all those cameras at the high school now with the Ford business and the copiers kind of threw a wrench in our plan. So we hope to work on that over Christmas break, but instead we were preparing for those copiers. So we're hoping within the next week or two, we're going to get started in North and South on those.
Any questions for Mr. Bowden?
I got one. Chris, the guidance office, did we ever put a phone in there to help everyone? Direct line? When everything doesn't go through the front offices, are you getting shipped down there half of them to the city?
Correct. We redid the call routing, so if someone doesn't answer a phone, it would ring to someone else's. Basically, it would ring until somebody answers at one point. I don't think we...
We kept it that. Here's why. If it rang down to the guidance office and the guidance office rang for the guidance counselor, it'd come back to the secretary who they just talked to in the guidance office. Yeah, so we switched that. So if it rings down to the guidance, she can disseminate it into the voicemail of the guidance counselors. So she'll ship it to the guidance counselor if they're on the phone or whatever. If they're not in there, it'll go straight to their voicemail. Before, if it went to the voicemail, they didn't pick up. It kicked back to the secretary who just transferred it into the guidance counselor.
And we can keep track of how many, actually how many calls was called in down to the guidance office and how many was picked up and how many went to the cell.
I don't know if, I don't know if we can do that, he might be able to. I don't know about seeing how many have been answered and picked up.
Yeah, we made those changes, that was a few weeks.
That was a while ago.
Month plus ago.
But I haven't heard anything since, since we did switch. I know we switched over the one time and it was causing more grief because they were coming back, back to the secretary who just sent them in because no one was picking up. Or somebody was in there, they were on the phone and ended to come back out to the guidance secretary.
Sorry.
Yeah, all right, thanks.
See, Food Service, Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Peg. Not a whole lot, probably going to put some on our board for the day of tonight. I did want to bring up that we are currently looking for subs for our cafeteria. The pump session had moved some folks to actually use their last sub up together. And I worked with Mr. Bowden and he came up with an idea on Facebook to allow the applicant to apply through Facebook. From that, for his first two days, 25 applicants. Probably about, that's close to 25, I know it was a lot. And then it stays up, so we continue to get more applicants in. We do have a few individuals that have applied, so we're working to get that taken care of. And I know he's done that, he's kind of moved that into maintenance as well, maintenance of the facility. But I did attend a workshop, a work session on Friday with PRFSD on commodity processing. We'll be getting that hopefully next month if the government opens back up, hopefully that money up for us to start converting money for 2019, 2020.
Any questions for Mr. Bowden? Thank you, Troy. Mr. Parnes, Transportation?
Thank you, Mr. Peg. Good evening, board. In addition to my board report, there was a question from the last month meeting. Did the research, one was the fuel consumption costs comparison from last year to this year. I did feel that was an apples, an apples situation because we are paying over fuel this year. So I did do a total of cost on down for home school and I gave a handout to cover that. Year to date up to the end of December, we already saved $108,000 plus. That's to factor in our protein reimbursements. It'll be over $125,000. So if we can spread that out to the end of the school year, we'll have a quarter million dollar savings with the new company. And additionally, someone asked a question about new buses. All the new propane buses are online and running in the district now, except for one. They're waiting for a certificate of origin for many bus 40. They can't put a license plate on it until the manufacturer gets, so it's a paperwork glitch. Everything else is up. We have 47 2019 buses and four 2018 buses. I have that list, if anyone's interested in that new show. Other than that, if you have any questions?
Does the board have any questions for Mr. Parnes? Thank you, Mr. Parnes. See, May, it's Mr. Cheslow.
Good evening, guys. Including what's in my board report, it's happened since then. We've had the gas company out, we had a leak here of beef, we shut the gas off. I came out on Saturday with Whipkey and we did a temporary close off of the kitchen. We patched that line out so we could get the heat back on the building. And as we get a little warmer weather, we'll go ahead and we have to do the welding on the gas line here. Excuse me, I gotta get that cold one on also. I'm getting ready to put an RFP out in the newspaper for South for the porticoed Ford truck. We're just not getting any interest in that job down there. Mr. Dillard even looked at a few of his contractor friends and they still haven't gotten back to us. I'm just going to do an RFP in the newspaper, hopefully we can get some interest off of that. Along with Mr. Golden, Mr. Bowden's advertised on social media also for custodial subs which we're going to be needing. In three days, we have 14 apply. So the social media seems like it's been doing the best. And we've also talked about the sign out in front of the business office. We're going to put on that sign out there, taking all applications for all positions at this point in time for sub custodians. Is there any questions for me?
Let me think, rooms are situated, name field down.
Vacant?
Classroom.
Classroom vacant, we have three on this wing, two on the bottom wing and two on this far wing down past the cafeteria. So it'd be a total of seven, seven classrooms we have open, so.
Any other questions for Mr. Cheslow?
It said that you're working on getting that filled.
It said that you're working on getting that bill stated as code for the generator?
Yes, they sent you the bill on the generator for North. And what they did is, is they overcharged us on the rental and everything, and I would not accept the billing and everything on that. Since then, they have dropped the price on the rental unit. We're also in, we've got a little discrepancy on some keys. They left some keys. I had to hunt down and find out where they were at. I finally got to them. I want to mail them back to them because they want to charge 200 bucks for the keys. And I want to get them back to them, get the bill set back down to where it needs to be at, and then we'll go ahead and submit that for approval.
Any other questions for Mr. Cheslow? Do you get your generator file?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. DuPont, athletics?
I've worked almost halfway through the winter season. Don't have a lot to say right now, but our middle school basketball, girls' basketball theme is going to come in on Wednesday and they're going to be recognized for their undefeated season. And I just need about a couple minutes of executive session for personnel.
Any questions for Mr. DuPont? Okay, thank you, Mr. DuPont. Building principals. I have principals here from all elementaries. And AG North, Mr. Frisco will be here Wednesday night, and I'll be here this evening. Any questions for any of our principals?
Oh, I think Jase, I got one before, I forgot. Did you get the mats cleaned?
They got, they got the floor, not the mats.
Okay.
Give them till tonight and I'm going to address it. Floor is done. Floor is clean.
Reason why I'd say that, because basketball game Friday night, gym look great, everything look fantastic. We got new mats. That's all, both sides of the mattress is still. So all that money and that gym, they need to be back. That's reasonable.
Mrs. Hott, you got a question?
No, I just wanted to comment and thank the board for purchasing the curtains they are on at Mason Town Elementary. If you would like to stop by and see them, they're absolutely gorgeous. So thank you very much.
Mrs. Hott, I do have a thank you that I will share with the, and with the board from your school in regards to those curtains. So I do have that for Wednesday night as well.
Oh, thank you.
Any questions for any of the elementary or middle school principal?
There was a note in one of the room packets, and I think it was from A.L. Wilson. They mentioned having 28 students in first grade class, and they had two over.
Yes, but both of our first grade classrooms, A.L. Wilson, when we started the year, the numbers were a lot lower. I know we only had two kindergartens last year with that group of kids, correct, Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
And we started the year with similar numbers of what they finished, but those numbers have grown. And I think even at one point, it was 29 and 28, if I'm not mistaken. But we do currently have 28 students in each first grade at A.L. Wilson. So Mrs. Beazak, Mrs. Baker and I have had some conversation and wanted to discuss that with the board this evening as far as, you know, the possibility of adding a first grade to alleviate those numbers. I know, I believe it was last year, we had similar numbers at Friendship Hill, and I think, was that fifth grade, Mrs. Presblewski, last year? But that number got to 30. That's the number we added a teacher, but that was fifth grade, I believe. This is first grade and 28 students is a, you know, is a high number for first grade. So any discussion on that, Board?
Mrs. Baker, is, are there any empty ones?
No. We've had discussions about possibly what we could do, but therefore, no, there's no room to be added. Our enrolling has increased from 356 at the beginning of the year to 399 now. And we, we're not losing, we just seem to be gaining. So we're, we're there, we're, we're cool.
As Mrs. Baker, Mrs. Beazak and I talked, one of the things is that we do add a first grade for the remainder of this year to alleviate. I think your second grade currently has three second grades?
Oh, yes.
So they would be transitioning into three teachers next year with those numbers. But the only...
Our first grade is the only grade with two teachers. And of course, you know, when we've had enrollment, they pay first grade. And I don't doubt they won't be paying probably more for them in the future.
We would more likely, if we add, we would have to use the art room and that would displace the art user where she would have to travel to the classroom to art, which I think we do that in some areas nowadays now.
What about the cafeteria?
Music is on the stage and Ms. Wossen uses that path for the deck. And then when you dip into some of the other classrooms, you're also now treading on some of the regs for special education. So it's a ripple effect. Certain things have been signed, there are documents that say they are assigned to these students. So we are, this is, we have to make a decision within the next week or so, obviously, but we come to an agreement about how we're going to do what we do to address that. And it's a K, like Mr. Peck said, it's a first grade. Not that anybody gets any more creeps, but when you are just primary grade levels, you do ideally want to keep those numbers at a minimum of those gotten to the ones.
Well, would the board consider giving me the permission as superintendent if we have any other first grade students enrolling at A.L. Wilson to add a teacher and utilize the art room and have art travel to the other classrooms? Or is it something you would like to do now, maybe the numbers are 28 or 28?
Is preschool or...?
No, we have preschool, we have a pre-k classroom at Mason Town Elementary. We have a pre-k classroom at Friendship Hill Elementary. None of the other elementaries have a pre-k program in them. So A.L. does not, but we do have, you know, some special education classrooms that they're earmarked for special education. We wouldn't be able to take one of those classrooms to the regular yard. We would have to utilize how much yourself would come up with a plan to put in.
We have an option that we have in mind, but it involves a staff.
Is it too late in the year to make a change?
I think last year, we made the change at Friendship Hill, it was, it was right around December.
It was the beginning of the second half of the year, and we added that faculty.
Did you have any outcomes?
Did you have any negative outcomes?
No. No, we prepared the parents and teachers for it, or I'm sorry, the parents and teachers for it. You know, we, you know, it was okay. We just, in classless, we just did alphabetically. And you know, it was just split it right in the after, it was now, and it was just an easier way to do it. Justified was just alphabetically order, these 15 go here, these 15 go here. So, you know, it's just kind of different.
I mean, I know no one wants to hear this, but Denise, I'm going to go to you financially. I mean, that's the bottom line here. You know, everybody, everybody wants, and I mean, I do too, but financially, what's he going to do?
Should the adding positions be included? Mrs. Weydie, I will say that, well, at least upon what Mrs. Frank said, the tentative idea that we could consider would probably be the path of least resistance, would be the easiest transition, something that we are considering, which is obviously something we can't discuss right here, right now. And to answer your question, this considered concept that we're thinking about probably would be also feasible financially, what we were considering.
I mean, I don't like to be the one bringing it up, it's reality. It's just, it's a part of it. It's all a part of it.
Could this be solved with pre-districting or district? Where students travel to?
Mrs. Baker and I looked at that. I think the number of students in first grade at A.L., the unit on the nails, the tennis area is like one. So that definitely doesn't have a parallel in the number of kids in first grade at A.L. Is that...
That's where Mitchell's honor too, goes in the question too.
Most logical thing is that you're right, you should move.
I mean, we can discuss the executive session, what Mrs. Beazak and Mrs. Baker and I talked about as far as if we do add something, because that does deal with some personnel, I think that would be executive session.
I have a hard question also. Do we have any other i-therm art features in the districts?
Yes.
And that works out fine?
Where they travel from or where?
Yes.
Yes. Principals, help me out by just raising your hand. If your art teacher travels from classroom to classroom in your building, would you, does that work out well, they'll be okay, Mrs. Presblewski?
We, yeah, I mean, there's really no option. She makes it work. Wednesday, she, we worked in the library because it's empty and then she has art on the cart and she goes to some classrooms. My music teacher travels as well. And we, 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 we just make it work.
Okay, so we can have discussion, executive session in regards to a plan that we have kind of discussed before, how to handle.
Can I ask Mr. Cheslow? Mr. Cheslow?
Yes, Mr. Cheslow.
I have a question about the stage. Has anything started happening with the stage? What is going to be worked on?
The last I was informed, we're waiting on Toby, Mr. Mecu, and Pittsburgh stage. And I told him I'd have any day open, he was making all show up. They want to have one more meeting before we move forward. I know we're in the process of selecting a color.
I might have to be there.
All right. Hey, any other questions, discussion needed with any of our principals, any of the schools? Thank you, principals. Chief Malachi, school security?
I have two minor ideas for exec. Other than that, you know, moving right along, it was a busy last two weeks in December with issues at the high school. We're solving most of those. We boarded up some stairways, we had cameras being installed, so the issues are being Hopefully, we solve some of the problems.
Chief, how's your open door policy working? Are doors open and closed?
We, we, we've planned out all the doors. They're getting better. We got a lot of doors fixed in the last couple weeks over Christmas. And then this past last week, even a lot of doors. There was another one broken today, pulled away, I put it on Mr. Hutchinson's restaurant school food. But, yeah, we're finding less doors open, less doors ajar. I've had discussions with Mr. Cheslow with, you know, his people in afternoon and night shift, you know, closing them and locking them behind. Talking less and less of being open or unlocked. So I think no problems are being addressed there.
Chief, in regards to the bag scanners, you have the information from the company we ordered the bag scanners before. So Board, that's an item will be to have, if you're in favor of adding to the agenda for Wednesday night to purchase the bag scanners for North South for the student entrance and logging the high school. Is that something we want to add to the agenda? That would be reserved under the capital project money that we sent to the department for security patrols? Any other, how many you agree to put on the agenda?
That, that grant will pay for one bag scanner plus a little bit. Not, not much, a little bit, but... Not much, a little bit. One is a student door, they make a smaller unit, possibly more, it'll be a brand new unit versus any refurbished one. However, it will be a better fit in the student door because of the concrete wall there and the steel stairway, all that interferes with the scanners and the walk-throughs. And we're really tight on space down there. I think Mr. Hutchinson would agree on that. And measuring like the refurbished ones that we have up the hallway, I don't think it's going to fit right. But the other ones, several inches smaller, that we can do it and it'll do the same job. But it's the same company that we brought them to off of, they're out of New Hampshire, and it's Co-Stars. And they were supposed to send Mr. Hutchinson a, an email with a new price quote. They hope the price is the same as what it was. It's just a newer day, aren't you? I believe he sent the one in November, he said he's going to update it in January very quick.
Chief, Malachi and Mr. Hutchinson and I will talk to see which bag scanner will we need to definitely purchase from the, from the student line. Depends only a difference of, you know, three or four inches. I mean, that is several thousand dollars more, right, Chief?
Yeah, but the three or four inches makes a big difference.
What kind of wrong will be on the egress? Leaving, if there's a fire or something, leaving through that access.
Well, you've got, you've got the, the walk-through is more wide. So you got to get the bag scanner beside it after it, you know, where there's access to the bag scanner. The problem is just trying to put that walk-through beside that bag scanner because that bag scanner can't go against the wall and it can't go against that stairway. There has to be some clearance there, which is...
Okay.
And the same thing happens with the walk-through. Where it gets a solid wall, you get interference on the, on the walk-through, they're not giving you a correct read. But, but exiting the building, we can reroute those kids that go out for a fire alarm or something on the other end towards going out to the football field. That answers your question in the band room area. There's not that many that go out that door. No, it's a small number. It's a library and one or two classrooms. And there's plenty of room that went out that door.
That's one of the main ways.
Yep.
Right. All right, thank you, chief. Any questions for Chief Malachi? Any other questions? Thank you. Financially, do these sheets...
I have an item on the agenda regarding the natural gas consortium. This information is received up in the patent court. We're in the consortium for a new unit, and their committee requested pricing from four major suppliers. And they are recommending that we, for natural gas prices, pricing for a three-year period starting September 1st of 2019. I handed out a sheet before the meeting, it lists those prices. And those prices will be deducted off the commodity price that we pay for natural gas. And they would like to have a contract for by January 2nd, so that's why I'm asking to have it added to the agenda. This is the only information we have, so just let me know if you have any questions or if you're okay with adding it to the agenda.
So it's not going to start until they did something on that?
Yes, they're extending it, I believe our contract, pricing, so they just want to extend the smaller pricing. We're not going to...
All three guys, you want, obviously, or just want to...
Some, some districts are with a different...
Yeah, that kind of sort of consortium. So it depends, some of them have two different suppliers depending on the building they're on. But ours is what? Ours is... So the one that says longer is going to apply to the natural gas.
So you're okay with adding that to the agenda?
Yes. And what it is, direct energy supplier that they have...
Okay, and the other item is our preliminary budgets. We have not been part of you. Timeline, January 31st is the deadline to make a proposed version of the preliminary budget available for public inspection, or you would have to adopt a resolution stating that taxes will not be raised above the index. February 10th is our deadline to give public notice of our intent to adopt the preliminary budget unless you do pass the resolution, contrary to the tax agreement. February 20th, that is the deadline to adopt the preliminary budget unless you adopt the resolution. And that is actually our board meeting next month.
So then as far as the dates, we should be qualified.
So we have to adopt the first two, this one we, and the third one next month.
You would have to adopt, so preliminary budget, I have something put together. They can do it sooner, we'll treat it normal. Yeah, you can adopt it sooner, but our deadline is February 20th. So since that falls our next working date, and you have numbers available, you just need to consider whether you want to adopt this budget or you have to pass the resolution or...
That has to be done next month.
You don't have to do that next month. But then that is not, you can still change that when we adopt, we gentrify, if we're trying to...
And you're getting due, you drop the final.
Yes, this is very...
This just gives us...
Right.
To discuss.
This is basically, this is basically to give us the option to enter into the rest of the reception if we do want to raise taxes above the index, and it doesn't mean that you will or have.
Yeah, which is give us more time to discuss it.
Yes, and at least your options are for additional revenue.
Or safety exemption or special education.
Yes, we do not, this year we do not qualify for the retirement exception. I think one of times, and then I'm kind of budgeting salaries off of budgeting numbers... I think a lot of times, and then I'm kind of budgeting salaries off of budgeted numbers for last year since we're still in negotiations, and this year's still unknown. So I'm budgeting, I'm probably budgeting, so I don't have actual numbers to work with.
So for the revenues, the local revenues were just updated very quick.
Updated as such, obviously, on November 13th of 2018. And the other local taxes, I looked at the trend in collections over the last three years and just tried to go with an average. State, federal revenues, I have no information from the state yet, but they're helping to do, so I have to say local funding, and the same thing with our federal programs money. Expenditures, salaries, I'll go into further detail with that in the executive session since some of it doesn't involve contract negotiation. For benefits, the health insurance now and construction, I budgeted the same as what I budgeted for 2019, since the SUU did make the changes to the structure, and they actually gave an interruption, most likely we'll see a decrease. So to be a little conservative, I just budgeted the same as 2019. And if the IU is an option, you also can yellow-mate it out of the description. The vision of life insurances are not able to, and the employer's share of retirement is going from 33.43% to 34.21%. Professional services, I always increase the IU, 7% based on the latest actual numbers, which were 720. And our alternative education possibly being developed, so I tried to increase those based on the trend of the last few years. Tuition, cyber school tuition is back on the rise. So it looked like I need to increase that around $200,000, which was last year. And the support for the food service fund, you know, at one time we were up around the $230,000 number for the support. Now we're down to $190,000, which now, that's speakers $10,000 over last year, but based on preliminary estimate. On the summary page with the numbers, our ending fund balance for June of 2018 is $4.8 billion. I'm still using our budgeted revenues and expenditures to come up with an estimate for the end of June of 2019. Over the next month or so, I'll be doing some projections to see where we're actually going to come out. But for now, that's at 2.7, knowing that we'll have a finish in June of 2019. This preliminary budget, revenues are $52.8 million, expenditures are $55.8, so that's just under $3 million of a decrease to fund balance, which would leave us in a deficit of $274,000 at the end of this year of 2020. So that's without any state money from raising the taxes. If you do a tax increase to the index, that would raise $289,528 in additional revenue. And by applying for the special ed exception, that would get another $212,000. And yeah, that's, that's not considering any implications that we have to keep from the state. So if you did raise taxes above the index based on this scenario, given June 2020, you'd have a $227,530. And the last change is the comparison by category of the expenditures. I just showed you what percentage of the total budget each category is, and what has increased or decreased over the final year of the last year. So I will go down to the end unless anybody has any specific question. And again, it will change by, by, by the end of the year. This is just to get us in that preliminary process to keep up.
Any questions for these? Thank you, Mr. Chiefs. I have, Mrs. Lent from the high school, FBLA. Mrs. Lent, come on forward.
Good evening.
We do have...
I'm a lot longer. Good evening. My state competition this year is going to be April 7th to the tech at Hershey again. We have 17 students competing. Of those, there are 11 first place winners we had this year, which I'll have to say. The trip, it's a three-night, four-day trip, we do it every year, but it's over $11,000 when it comes down, because you're staying overnight three nights, that's including their bills, their registration, and so forth. This year, we did very well with fundraising, so I'm adding an additional almost $1,000 from our account. So I'm paying $3,482 out of the FBLA account. We're asking each student to pay $250 apiece, which comes to $4,250. All I'm asking from the board is the chaperone expenses and the $85 registration per student, which is $3,301. Last year, we had asked for $3,400, but that's, I may be able to take more out of my account this year. So anything you can do would be greatly appreciated, we always have a good standing. I look for some winners again this year. Any questions?
Any questions for Mrs. Lent? Okay, so, did you, did you provide a breakdown with everything?
Yes. And we do a regional bus, so there's no busing through the district. That comes on the students' pay as well, they get a charter bus or a call, but the regional schools, which is nine of them, and we have a meeting place we always need. We're 51 and so many across, we gotta go there, and the parents have to provide that transportation there. But that makes it nice if we don't have to take two bus out there and use the transportation that way.
Thank you, Mrs. Lent. No questions for you? I believe that is on your agenda for Wednesday night to approve that for the FBLA. And that is to Hershey.
Yes.
I think that's everything. There is a need for an executive session for personnel, real estate, and negotiations. So, yeah, negotiations, collect the board. So at this time, all of you are free to go. I do need those of you that need to speak in executive session to stick around. I know Mrs. Beazak, you're good evening, so I'll have this view of Mrs. Baker first. We'll take a five-minute recess.